Review District as per my email Fran's suggestion that has all been moved to um 134-14.
So do we want to Dave I'll wait for you to catch up or you do want to open a meeting first so we can.
Yeah, I was thinking maybe we could turn it into a drinking game and every time someone says section 134, we have to take a drink.
It works for me. What are we, what are we drinking anybody?
I only have water here, but yeah.
Sure, sure it's water.
Maybe.
Okay, yeah, welcome everybody. Sorry for the delay. I'll call a meeting to order. The whole agenda for tonight is just the code update review by the board. We will not be taking public comment, but there will be ample time for any suggestions or concerns or issues to be voiced during public hearings. And we will make sure that those are well advertised. So that said, before we do get in, I think where are we at? Before we continue with a number of issues that we kind of didn't finalize like fences, we started talking about at home occupations. Did we just, where are we with those?
And fences, the, the, I think the issue was primarily on the repair or restoration of existing fences and the phrase portions was taken out. So it's only the repair or restoration of an entire fence that would be affected.
Okay, but my feeling is there should be six foot fences allowed and this is the only area where this would be the change, right? Cause it says in that section that they are not allowed.
What section is that again? What defenses?
Um, it's on page 80.
80, oh, okay, I'm in the wrong place.
Uh, 13-17Q or 130.
Go ahead, say it 130 what?
Has a number.
It's Q, it's um.
80.
It's under supplementary, it's.
Q, it is Q, yeah.
Yes, it is Q. It's on page JD. Those are enough hints.
Now you're gonna find.
I got. My queue is on 81, but okay.
Yeah, mine is too, but that's okay. I'm not telling. Now, there's no other place in the, in the whole code that says fences not over four feet doesn't, is there's no place else that talks about fences, Marie?
I believe that is correct.
And then the last line, it says in Q is a lot, um, B1, B2, or B3, or when permitted by variance shall be limited to four feet.
Actually, it's in the first section. It's also in the first sentence. The first sentence is a primary statement about fences.
But that, yes.
See, I, I don't, I don't think fences should be allowed to be six feet in the village. I really don't.
Well, I think they should be limited to, I mean, where, where they can be. I don't see any reason why. And you know, maybe this where you disagree, I don't think they should go all the way to the property line, all the way to the front of your property line. Like say your house, for instance, Fran, I think they should be limited to the, where your building starts at the back or at the very farthest. You know, the front of your, your building. I don't think they should go all the way, but I don't see any reason why the backyard shouldn't have a six foot fence. Um, if it's adjacent to a property, a residential property or a business or whatever. And you know, on a side property, I, I think that you should be able to have one if that's your only, you know, like my property, I have a side yard. I think there are others like that. I don't think they should be allowed on properties where they're adjoining a street or facing a street that's open. Um, there's a number of those that I don't think that's what we want. And I think that would definitely distract from our takeaway, you know, the community feeling or neighborhood feeling. Um, but if it's in someone's backyard or if it's on the side of your yard and it's not extending to the front of the property, I don't see why it shouldn't be allowed.
You see, I, I just think it, it just loses the village feel when you're putting big fences like in the back of my property right now, I have on one side. On one side and in the back, I've got probably a four foot fence. I don't know. I try to measure by how tall I am, but I keep shrinking. So I lose track of how tall the fence is, but on the other side, on one side of my property, there is at least a six foot fence, probably higher. And then towards the front, there's like eight foot bushes. So while I know my, you know, my neighbor, because we see them on the front, on the other side, at least, you know, you sort of have neighborly people. Now, if you don't have neighborly people, you know, that might be an issue, but I think, I think it sort of loses the nice small village effect by having big fences all around.
Yeah, the, the intent, the, the thinking here is that when you live in a village, um, the, the intention is to keep the fences as low as possible to allow um, the admission of light into the yard. The.
That's, that's gonna stop. With the sunset at three, six feet. How does that stop like from coming in the yard?
And I will continue, and I will continue. It, it is also intended to permit free air movement uh into the yard. Uh, so if, if someone wants six offenses all around their house, maybe living in a village is not where they should be.
I, I, I would disagree. I like, love living in the village, but I like my privacy older. I like to go back with my family. I'd like to have a dinner outside with my wife and with not looking over at somebody else doing whatever they're doing. That's, that's nothing to do with neighbors. I love my neighbors, but we also have fences. They do what they want to do and I'm not peering over into the yard. And that's nothing to do with that.
Okay, so let's, let's take a vote. Who wants?
Well, we don't have Lynn here. We know that vote's going two to two. It's the same as the last time.
Okay, so let's move on.
Okay, the other one that I'd like to just, just quickly go on is uh, it was uh, 134 uh, 15A, page 46.
Oh wait, now I gotta go way back anyway.
It's just, it's just a quick one and you can disagree. It just references seniors at 55 years age and old, uh, older.
Alright.
And I think that 55 is not what I would consider a senior anymore at one time, maybe. So it's in reference to who can stay in, you know, like the senior citizen development or what a senior citizen development is.
I think, do we wanna, do we wanna go by?
So 15A would be Butterfield.
Right, they're senior housing of up to 55 units, uh, with the following exceptions, every unit shall be occupied at least a person of 55 years old.
Yeah, so you can certainly change that, but it will not affect Butterfield.
No, I know that.
Yeah, so shall we?
It's under, is there a Butterfield section?
That's 115A. Sorry, 15A is.
Butterfield, we're talking about senior citizen housing, right?
Right, no, so seniors, there's two of them. There's 15 and 15A.
Okay.
So this happens to be 15A. This was written.
This was written for Butterfield.
For Butterfield, but it doesn't mean we have to write it to come, to um, be exactly like Butterfield. This is for future. Butterfield is already grandfathered in.
That's right, it is. Okay. I looked at the definition of senior, go ahead.
I, you're probably gonna say what I was thinking. I tried to get a definition from New York State of senior citizen and it sort of floats all over the place.
Yeah.
I'm reading one right now.
Yep, and, and the ones.
Which that makes me a senior citizen, which is excellent, because.
You can get discounts. You join AARP, you get a discount.
The AARP is 50, when you hit 50, right?
I know, I think so, yeah.
Yeah.
Yeah. But it doesn't have a legal definition of senior.
I mean, under, under just like, you know, uh, I, I don't know. General common sense, whatever you want to call it. I mean, isn't 55 not seniors? And, and if this is gonna be used, I mean, say, this isn't just for Butterfield, it was written for Butterfield or was there before Butterfield? What if, uh, would if, can, what if they want to change Marathon into senior citizen housing?
Do we, do we want to have it as active seniors or do we want to have it as decrepit seniors? And I know that sounds sort of weird.
55 is nowhere near a senior. I'm not talking about decrep.
No, I know, but I mean.
Let's skip over it. If you, if that's not obvious, then I'm not gonna argue it.
If we, no, I, I think.
Whatever you want to do.
I think senior is 65, but I'm trying to figure what we want to do if someone wants.
You can be married for the third time and have 10 kids for God's sake in the new, in our, in our age that we're living in right now. I mean, 55's not.
You're describing me actually.
10 times Steve, huh? No, 10 kids, I'm sorry.
You should have senior citizen housing if we're including 55 and, and older, because that's not, that doesn't limit it at all. Okay, let's move on.
Okay. Where are we at?
The last one was the home occupation. Where did we leave that? We were discussing that with Lynn. I think Steve wasn't there that time. And it was a two to two, my feeling with home occupations not being allowed in uh, in accessory buildings.
Yes.
Page 61 or, yeah.
Non attached.
What's that?
Non attached garages and outbuildings and such.
Yeah.
Accessory.
Okay, what, I'm sorry, what page are we on?
I think it's on, sorry, it's uh, 61.
Home occupations, uh, establishing.
Uh, is it 61? Uh, let's see, um. Or maybe it's 66, sorry. I think. Yeah, 66.
Okay. Supplementary regulations.
Yeah.
Okay, accessory building, detached garage is shown on a C.
Five, it's uh, an accessory building may not be used for home occupation. Home occupation limits a primary structure of the tax lot.
accessory. accessory buildings may not be used.
And I think we kind of left, we just kind of left that one in the air too. Uh, were you, you weren't here for that, were you Steve?
No, I wasn't, but we, I reviewed it. Uh, that makes sense. We talked about it because of another part of the code for some reason. When we were discussing uh, accessory buildings.
Yes, yes.
We were talking about it.
When we were talking about what, sorry?
Accessory buildings, a couple of weeks ago, we were talking about it, but, but I don't remember ever, you know.
We kind of just left that, so I guess we're, I, I, I don't know unless we.
So Steve, you, do you want to leave this Steve or do you agree with this or not?
Uh, I agree with it. As far as I understand what an accessory building is, so if, you know, if you have a mower shed and you want to Airbnb it, I don't want people to be able to do that. If you want to build a, you, you know, a little miniature house in your backyard and rent it out to people, I don't think you should be able to do that either, but.
But if you want to have.
There might be other aspects of it that I'm not seeing. I don't know.
If you want to have a business in there, Steve, like say you, you want to have a, you know, a kiln or something and then start making pottery.
Yeah, that, that I was okay with. We were talking about that last week, but, but to.
I don't think home occupation would be an Airbnb, is it?
Okay.
Yeah. Home occupation is not a B and B.
Oh, okay. Well, that's what we were, that's what one of my questions was, was that that would be considered that, so.
I, I think, I mean.
I think you should be allowed to, sure.
Wait for the full board, but you can also refer back to 61 and what, and the restrictions or regulations for having home occupations. If they applied to accessory buildings would kind of alleviate all the fears that most people would have, you know, as far as noise, odors, you know, unusual nuisances, you know, so.
I'm sorry. Go, go ahead.
No, I mean, I just think that, you know, there are concerns and you don't want someone to have a cabinet shop there. Maybe it's like working nonstop with drills and saws going, but I think in, I think 61 addresses that. And you know, home occupations that are allowed in the house as long as there's not excessive noise and odors and et cetera.
Right, well, you know, there's a big difference between having a home workshop where you make stuff. You know, if you happen to be a woodworker, you're allowed to have that in your house, but you can't run a woodworking cabinetry manufacturing business out of your, out of your house.
So, so if someone has a, a business and they have to apply for a permit to run a business, does that permit um, mention that it's going to be either in an accessory building or in the house or in the basement or whatever? Is that any part of the permission that they're gonna get and who approves those permits?
I believe that the code enforcement officer would approve any permit for a home occupation.
So. And so they would, they would approve it based on the fact that it's going to be a disruption to the neighborhood and so on and so forth, right?
They would, given the way the code is written right here, the first thing they would do is look at what are the conditions for a home occupation? And then they would consider whether or not the home occupation would exist in the primary structure or in the accessory building.
Okay, I mean, I tend to go with, I guess, Lynn and, and everybody else on this. I don't think, I don't think we should say accessory building cannot be used for home occupation. But yeah, I think it's, you know, if they're gonna get approval for it, it's up to the code enforcement officer to determine.
Right.
I think it should be a lot under the same regulations as home occupation, you know, if that, if it needs to be defined or, you know, defined further. If we left this and said maybe used, but under the same regulations as and refer it back or somehow included in the upper one, I think.
So you would keep it the same as a home occupation?
Right, all the regulations.
Accessory building occupation.
occupations uh, would apply to accessory buildings, so.
It's on your property, that's enough, basically. Is that what you mean, Dave?
That what?
It, it's on your property, so that's enough, whether it's accessory building or it's in your basement or living room would be okay.
We're pulling accessory building out of, out of it. So if you wanted to put it back in, I don't know if you need anything special, because it could be on anything. Or either we add it to 61, which is about home occupations and say accessory buildings included. Or here we'd say accessory buildings are allowed, but under the same regulations as home occupations in 61, whatever.
I would just, if, if what you want is to permit accept home occupations and accessory buildings, then delete five.
All right, and so, but is it, is it clear in the above in 61, when we're talking just in general about home occupations in the, in, in your residence? Because the other ones are referring to the residents, aren't they?
I don't think so.
Sorry, accessory building may not be used as a residence. Okay, we, we talking page 61, Dave?
Uh, yeah, I think so. Yep, 61.
Actually, it's in. Okay, it's gonna require major changes. Uh, the definition of a home occupation talks about the dwelling unit. The definition also talks about the dwelling unit, so I'll, I'll take this offline and make the changes.
So instead of, do you count, can't we just, where we have accessory building right now, say that they're allowed under regulations of 61?
No, no, because the definition of a home occupation says, conditions, the establishment uh, shall not change the principal character visual appearance facade or use of the dwelling unit involved. Number two, such use shall not inquire, require internal or external alteration in the dwelling. The use is clearly incidental and secondary to the principal residential use of the premises. So I, I have to go back and change it.
Is there any way we can just change the wording of?
No, because the definition of the, the conditions state that it has to do with the dwelling unit.
So in 66, that shouldn't even been there, because it, accessory building not be used for home occupations, that, that was really not even needed there. Right?
We wanted to make it explicit.
What's that?
We wanted to make it explicit.
Why can't we make it explicit on the reverse?
All right, so are you gonna adjust the definition, right?
Yeah, I'll adjust the definition and also the conditions.
Okay, sorry to go backtrack. Where, where are we to scenic, we're like, sorry.
Okay.
134-14.
What's the page?
Let me see. We moved it up.
Yeah, it's 14.
It's near the beginning, so, there we go.
Should be right before 13415, of course.
That works.
Where are we?
You're all the way up in page.
37, page 37, right? Scenic view shed overlay district.
Right, yeah, we moved this up. Basically, because I, I didn't feel that.
It's pretty email.
It was stuck between a bunch of other stuff. Thank you, Marie, for doing all that. So scenic view shed overlay.
So where are we, Fran?
You're on page, right now you're on page 37, because we moved scenic, we took scenic view shed over, uh, overlay out of the section it was in and put it in its own section, so it's now 13414, page 37.
Before I continue, a, a, a recommendation or suggestion, can we include, um, not, not in the conversations or whatever, Kathleen and Heidi? So that they can follow along, since they'll be on.
I think Kathleen's on, right?
She is.
Does she, she sees the screen that we're working on though?
No.
Can we, uh, can we, uh, share that with her and Heidi if?
Heidi's not here.
Just me.
Well, I mean, they can.
Oh, he's getting an A for today.
Not for conversation purposes, but so they can follow along or participating?
They need, yeah, they need to have access to the.
The document.
So how do we do that with the share? If we just do that, can we go to share and whoever's the owner of this, is that you Fran?
No, it's me. Marie's got the owner of these.
I'll need their email addresses.
Kathleen, if you can send Marie email address.
I, I'm here. Do you want my personal email address for that? Because my. You want to access it, whatever email address you want to access the. Okay, thank you. The other change that was made, what by moving 13417 up, was that for all of the other districts, the supplementally supplementary regulations, as you can see for PR1 immediately above it, applicable requirements of 13414 has been added to each of them.
Right, so that, that should be easily approved, so, well, just because, because scenic view shed used to be part of 13417.
Exactly.
And we were required, using those requirements, now it's, it's its own separate section.
Yeah.
So that to me looks like not a problem.
Okay, and it's in every single district, Fran, so.
All right, I'll, I'll go back and approve those.
Okay, great.
So, so on the scenic view shed overlay district that we were talking about, um.
Yeah.
I had, uh, just my comment was on the inventory.
Yeah.
And I wrote it, I wrote it down. It says, seems to me that some of these places should be more considered protective open spaces instead of part of a scenic view shed.
Right, and I responded to you on that.
Right, I did see that. So, uh, I'm still, I mean, I can see a view being something across a river, a mountain, a river, so on and so forth. But a park, so in other words, we're protecting the parks as part of the view.
Yes, so for example, the St. Mary's lawn.
Right.
The view.
Same areas, how do we define someone as, something as a protected open space or do we do that?
Um, that, there is, um, that is described, I can't remember in which section, but typically it involves an easement.
It involves an easement.
Typically, protected open spaces are protected through easements. Um, I'll have to go back and look to see where it is described.
Because I, I can see Duck Side and I can see McConville Park and Mayor's Park, but St. Mary's Lawn doesn't belong to us currently, so.
Right, but neither, but neither does Mount Taurus. Or the historic waterfront buildings, or the chapel restoration, or the foundry.
But we don't have an easement, but those aren't protected open spaces, those are scenic views.
That's right.
So if we wanted to find something as a protected open space, to me that means it's protected, nobody can ever build on it. Nobody can build on McConville Park or, or Mayor's Park. I mean, Duck Side right now is sort of half hours and half nought hours. Um, but Mayor's Park, McConville Park, um, to me, protected open space means that when, nobody's gonna be allowed to change that as an open space, you know, sell it to a, sell it to a developer and, and have them build on it.
Okay, so I will go back and, and look to see um, about protected open spaces. But as I said, they typically involve an easement. Here, the objective is to allow people to continue to see those 10 items, 12, 11, whatever.
14.
Thank you.
So, okay, that, that was my comment.
Brandon, it's not, it's not to protect those properties, it's to protect your obstruction of your view of those properties.
Right.
Right.
Okay, so when, so.
So if you want to put a building up in front of someone's, it's gonna stop them from seeing Bull Hill, or if they're, it's gonna stop them from seeing the river. Uh, this overlay, I guess, would deal with that.
Yes.
Which, which, okay, I could say, I just, I didn't quite get my head around the parks, so we can't put a building up stopping anyone from seeing McConville Park.
Yes.
Well, there's limits, right? I mean, I, I don't think we can stop that. I, I just don't think we can stop that.
Yeah, I don't understand how we can either, but.
Let's, let's take Infeld's property on, and hi, Tom, if you're ever on, we always refer to you. Tom Infeld's property, he has, and supposedly billable, um, he wouldn't be able to put anything on there, because it's gonna, like, for the first floor, would definitely obstruct view of the river for, you know, from, uh, what's her name's building, oh, straight across the street.
His old, his old building.
Yes, and this is saying that you can't do that, or is it, is it a recommendation that you limit it as much as possible?
What this is saying is that it, so if you take a look at, at where it applies, it's the entire village. The provisions only apply to applications for subdivision of a property, which is not that. Those applications that require a site plan or special use permit and applications for buildings permits requesting permission to increase the height or width, width of an existing structure. Um, so the planning board would work with the applicant to try to minimize as much as possible the blocking of the view. It's not a, you can't build anything, but rather it is, how can this particular proposed structure be cited, S I T E D, on the parcel to minimize obstruction of views?
Okay, but, but what if it can't be? Then, then the, the overlay goes out the window or the, or the person owning the property can't build on it? Like, which, which one gives first? Because there's a lot on this list, there's, there's a lot of buildings that could be added on to, even on Main Street. The whole, south of Boulevard, the whole, you know, battery. The whole south of Boulevard, the whole, you know, battery plant lot, someone puts a three-story house or two and a half stories, thirty-five foot house in a long Kimball, you're not going to be able to see towards Crow Hill and whatever else it's saying.
There's not many houses. There's not many houses on that end of Kimball that you're going to be blocking the view of because they're pretty high.
They are, but.
All of the, all of the houses on the east side of of Constitution, if they built, then they would obstruct views from the west side of Constitution.
Yeah, Bull Hill.
But I don't know if they would fall into it, Marie, maybe I, how would that work? So across the street from Steve, the guy wants to, is allowed to build a two-story, two and a half story building.
Okay.
Okay, and then where's it go? How does the overlay come into it? Because this is going to obviously obstruct Steve's view of Campbell Ridge.
I don't, no, not not Campbell Ridge.
All right, that's right, I forgot.
I can see Bull Hill from Mike.
Right, okay, I was forgetting what Campbell Ridge was again.
You know, Bull Hill's so high, he would have, he would have to build a two-hundred-foot building in order to block Bull Hill. Because Bull Hill's sticking way up there, it's very high, but my point was like, so if you're going down on Kimball heading south and someone builds a row of houses along there, okay, like the first right off the street, whatever the legal setback is, and then they're saying there's another street that gets put in behind that one to the west. The people that are in the first row of houses won't be able to see the view of Crow Hill that it says you're supposed to be able to see because there'll be another house the same size as theirs right behind theirs. So the kind of limits. So my way is to get back to where we started. What what gives first, the overlay or the people's right to do what they're allowed to do on their property when they purchase it?
Okay, there's a third option, which is working with the planning board to cite the house or their structure in a manner such that the obstruction of views is minimized as much as possible.
We said that, but what if you can't? What if there's just no damn way to build site this house on the lot so that that you you're blocking the view shed? Or not blocking the view shed? Are you are you not allowed to build it because of the scenic overlay? Or does the scenic overlay, well, we tried, but it, you know, we can't stop these people from building what they want to build.
I believe it's the latter, after working with the owner of the the property who has plans to do whatever they plan to do, and there's no way, no way at all, that the building can be cited or or modified with an angle so that the people who are claiming that their view will be obstructed can be satisfied.
Well, you think though, but is is the intent of the overlay to be like, nope, you can't build it?
No.
Like, is that the original intent, or is it just to make sure people are are being cognizant of the fact that, well, you might be blocking someone's view, maybe there's a better way of building your house? Or maybe not blast, so you can see right through it.
Well, no, I would never suggest that. The latter.
Mm-hmm, okay.
So you you said before, and you cited some things on the Infel property, how that wouldn't be affected, or what was that again, or do you remember?
Yeah, so if you look, if you look at the beginning of one thirty of the.
Right, okay.
I'm sorry, it's jumping around, I can't get to.
It's it's on D where it says procedures, page thirty-nine.
So so this applies to applications for subdivisions, which is not Infel. Applications that require site plan or special use permit, which will probably be Infel and applications for building permits with increase in height or width by ten feet. So Infel probably falls into the second one.
And where's that again, Marie? Sorry, I've got.
Yeah, one, page thirty-eight.
Okay.
Under B.
Under B, okay. I thought you said B when Fran said B.
I'm sorry, I said D, I was looking at something else.
Okay.
Fran never was good with the alphabet.
You know, yeah, I'm good with numbers, but not letters.
Number sky.
Sorry, I'm a numbers person.
Well, this might deter certain people from buying things as well, if they know they're going to have to go to hell and back in order to build what they want to build, which which would conform to the code normally what they want to build, but then the overlay might, you know.
What's even, what's even worse than it's.
For example, when I bought my house, the only reason I bought it is because I knew I was going to put a second story on it. That's why I bought it, and I went to the billing department and I investigated it and got assurances from Bill Bajarski that, yep, you can do that to that house. And so I went ahead and bought the thing and, you know, had the had the overlay been in place at the time, actually Jeff across the street could have said, oh, hold on, he's blocking my view the whole river with this now, this house that wasn't there before, and now it's there, I can't even see.
Sorry, he couldn't, he could.
Even though it's seasonal view.
He's got it, he's got a one-story house, you had a one-story house. How could he see the river before?
Because when there's no leaves on the trees, you can see the river, you can look right.
Right through. How can you see the river from a one-story house across the street from you?
Oh, I see what you're saying. I'm referring to the the mountains, crow's nest and stuff. You can see all that, when the leaves are off the trees, it's, you can see West Point, you can see all the way across the whole river.
Okay, so maybe what would have done is working out with you for a second floor that was not the full width of your house, so that some view of.
Right, a piece of crow's nest?
Yeah.
Yeah, that would have been crazy, though, I would have never bought the property, if that's what I had to do.
Okay, so, so, yes.
So it'd be a deterrent to sale of property. It it might be in the ways, all I'm saying, I'm proposing the idea that perhaps this might be a a deterrent for people getting value for the property they own, or something like that. Or owning a property where, well, you can develop it, but you're going to have to go through this extra step with the overlay and all that, and it may, you know, get expensive. You know, kind of like when you buy an HDR on the historic district, you can't do whatever you want to the house, people are aware of these things. Now, this would be something else that people would probably be need to made aware of when they buy a place if it could possibly go that way. I don't know if I'm being clear, but.
You are.
You know, one of the things I think that, and I don't know how to control this, is that when people buy houses in the village, they don't always get all of this. So somebody comes in to buy a house and goes to a real estate. Are they told that, you know, you're in a historic district, are there rules and regulations? Sometimes I don't know if they are or not, in which case they come up against this. You know, I don't mind so much if they're told in advance, and then they think about it, and then decide, well, I don't want this, maybe somebody else wants it. But the worst part of it is, is when they're not told, and then they, you know, then they try to do something and find out that they can't.
Well, I'll say, I'll say what my father always used to say, ignorance is no excuse.
That's right. Well, I did my homework on my place, and then I ended up having to go through a whole zoning review because of the way Bajarski operates. I will talk about that, but then right in the middle of me trying to get permission to do my house, the whole shed gate thing happened. And and those people were given permission, do the work they did to the to their shed out back of their house, and it turned into a whole huge scenario, and I was like, Jesus Christ, am I good, did I buy a really horrible house, and I'm not even going to be able to do what I want to? Because this house was terrible, it should have been condemned, the house I bought. And I got started to get really scared because I was like, Jesus, or, you know, can they just change their can they just change their mind, and can my neighbors get mad and say, hey, hold on a minute, I didn't know it was going to look like that? And 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 affect my ability to do the work I was going to do. So, you know. And that all turned out in the favor of the the homeowners over there, but anyway.
Isn't the thing, so I I think the thing that's confusing, I think, and it, you know, and Steve's definitely hitting on it, is like, so is this, and I don't think it's clear in there that this is suggestive in a way. I mean, yes, the board, if 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 your application triggers it, it'll go to the scenic view, you know, it'll go to this code, but is that, I don't think it's clear in here that there's an option, you know, or that all the all remedies aren't, you know, going to work that you can still build. Or does that have to be in here? I mean, I don't think that's clear. It sounds like from this, we're trying to protect stuff, and this is, this is what triggers it, and this is, you can't obstruct these views, there's nothing in here that says you know.
What happens if you do, or what if you have to, what if you have to?
Or that it's a kind of recommendations to try to preserve everything.
Okay, I'll work on it.
Put the words, it would be nice if you didn't block.
No, no, no. I'll work on it. Julie, you.
Try not to block your neighbor's view.
I mean, I agree with it, I just think it's, I think it's a real tough one.
Yeah.
And I'm sure like places like New York City have to really deal with with space and buildings going up two more stories and or ten more stories, or putting new buildings up that are totally blocking your primo view.
And that's what happened. And that was the West Side Highway, where everyone, Trump built all this stuff down there. Blocked all those people's views, he put all those high rises on.
This code in section E, it says site development standards, to the extent possible, to the extent possible, all structures to be built shall be cited and clustered in such a way as to avoid or minimize the obstructing of views of elements, parcels, and structures listed in the inventory. It doesn't say it has to be, it said to the extent possible. Does that cover what we're asking for?
Yeah, I think it does.
So.
Okay.
I think, I think.
We're good now.
Okay.
We're good.
Okay, so, we're good, okay. The other question I had there and under.
We're just making fun of you, Fran.
I know, see, and here I am, like.
Yourself.
I'd be doing good, I'm on, I can stay, I can stay on the board for another year.
Colors and materials, is that what you're looking at?
Oh, yeah, the section under that, I I just asked was colors, colors and materials, I didn't think was under the planning board, but Marie said in the proposed SVO district, colors and materials are under the planning board, so that's fine, I can get rid of that, because I thought um, I didn't think that was a planning board issue, so.
It is, it is new, it is, it's new, and it's only for this.
Okay, that works for me.
So I'd like to go back to page twenty-six, which is B one, height, maximum height, and the number of stories shown in there is three. I didn't think we agreed on that.
I thought we agreed on a height, but but not a number of stories.
Well, three stories, but it has to stay under thirty-five feet.
Yeah, and I didn't think we agreed on the number of stories. I thought it was going to stay at two and a half.
I I thought that's what we decided on, because we didn't have a height definition, but I'm pretty sure you're right on that. It was, it's left, I think we actually kind of voted, or took a straw poll, and it was two and a half.
Okay, that's what I thought.
So we're gonna go back to two and a half.
Thank you.
Helps if I can spell, see, I told you I'm not good with letters.
Yeah.
That's in residential, right?
No, B.
No, this is B one.
This is the bit, this is.
This is Main Street, okay.
Yeah, I thought we. No, no, it's not just Main Street, B one is many of the buildings on Main Street and all of the properties below the railroad tracks. That's B one.
Which is, which is fine. So what we're up there for.
So can you get rid of my comment there, Fran, off on the right?
I'm sorry, where are we?
I'm sorry, twenty-six, I I can delete it.
Okay, yeah, you got it. I moved up a little bit and then lost it. And we decided for marinas for the docking, we decided repair sales and service was coming out, right?
Yeah, it's out, isn't it?
Okay, it was never approved. Okay, yeah, some of these things I have to go back and just approve.
Sorry, what were? Why is on twenty-six, if you were down to H? Why is that link there? Fran, you added it today.
I added it today?
That's what they are. That's what it's.
Lying, it's blaming me for stuff I didn't do.
Okay.
No, I'm only teasing. Seriously.
I mean, that's what it says.
No, yeah, you know, I must have been in.
At seven sixteen today.
I'm sorry, I must have been in the middle of two and two different things at the same time. That came out.
Thank you, thank you.
I was, I was looking at something, I don't even, oh, I sorry, I was not even in seven sixteen, like just now?
Yeah, so you've deleted it, it's gone.
Okay. All right, so.
Foley do that? Maybe Foley did it.
So on page, on page twenty-nine, Marie, did you make that November tenth? Was that changed? Because it seemed like there were a lot that I thought we changed, I don't remember, I'm just asking.
Yes, these are Fran, Fran is going to go back and change these.
I thought maybe there was some way we, I don't know, lost some time here.
There's some stuff, there's some stuff up in the beginning that we said we were going to go back over.
Okay.
But, you know, and do you want to go back to the bottom and just finish up, and then maybe hopefully next week we can go back and just clean this up.
Yeah.
Hopefully. If I'm still alive.
Do you want to go to?
Where were we? We were at eighty.
Seventeen. Seventeen R and then seventeen S. And then we're ready to go on.
Nice. Seventeen, and I'll clean up some of this stuff, except for places where we decided. Do we have to come back?
Is seventeen R landscaping with it, around parking lots?
It may be.
Page eighty.
I'm getting there.
Okay.
JD, thank you.
Yeah, it must be.
Okay, we moved the front row dumpsters and did that piece.
Okay, Fran, after the meeting tonight, do you want to accept the deletion of S?
Sure.
Or do you want me to accept?
No, I can, I can actually accept it now, as long as we're good with it, and I think that'd be fine. Okay, Q, Q was the fences. Okay, accepted deletion of this. All right, I'm gonna, I'll do it after the meeting, because it's, it's not popping up the way I needed to.
Okay.
So, so are parking lots. Okay.
Landscaping in and around parking lots, and then, and then that would be followed by fees, F-E-S, that was T, it should now become S. And I've suggested that change.
Okay, parking lots and portioned multiple numbers, and it should be landscape permanently, okay, this was the one.
We talked about this last week.
We did.
Yeah.
You know, the landscaping of it. I guess that was okay, right? We had no other issues with it?
No, no.
Okay. So then we're gonna go down.
Okay, so night, the next one is nineteen eighteen, used to be supplemental supplementary regulation applying to I can't remember, it was residence districts or non-residence district. But they've all been, they've all been consolidated into seventeen now, so eighteen is not used.
Right.
And we're nineteen had. Yeah, nineteen had been non-conforming uses, and this has been expanded to non-conforming buildings and and non-conforming lots.
Okay. And discontinuance of a non-conforming use has been, whenever a non-conforming use has been discontinued or ceases for any reason, you show thereafter, this is at C. Shall not there have to be reestablished? Okay, so that's okay. Say again, Steve?
What page are we on?
I'm lost. We're on page eighty-six.
Oh.
Thirty-four nineteen.
Nineteen, okay.
So we're. I got eighty-five, unless we're.
Yeah, I think your pages seem to be a page behind me or page ahead of me or something. Yeah, I think your pages seem to be a page behind me or page ahead of me or something. I'm on eighty six.
Okay.
Vacancy, all right, A, B, C, C one vacancy of a building originally designed or pre-arranged are used for non-conforming for for a continuous period of twelve months. It will be, so we're defining here a discontinuance.
Discontinuance, right.
Is this an additional letter, Marie? Should this be D?
I can everything in it. I keep flipping over it.
Pardon me?
No, I didn't know if I wanted to. I didn't know if you wanted to make this letter D, but I'm fine. Um, so if you don't use a building continuous use for twelve months, then it will no longer be considered non-conforming, non-conforming use.
It, it will have been considered that the non-conforming use has been discontinued.
Okay. So this goes into then vacancy of land, uh, and three, clear intent on the part of the owner to abandon the non-conformity use in conformity with the regulations of this chapter. She'll be deemed to be abandonment of a form of non-conforming use. Okay.
Now, C said, uh, used to say that a non-conforming use may be changed to use of the same or higher classification. Our code doesn't have such a classification structure. So once, once changed to a conforming use, no building or land shall be permitted to revert to a non-conforming use.
Okay.
Deleted this, this concept of classifications of non-conforming uses.
Okay, we went to parking spaces, then we went to cessation, secession of junkyards. Uh, notwithstanding, we're taking this all out. Any provisions of this?
Yes, because, because we don't have any junkyards.
And we're not allowing anymore.
And we're not allowing anymore. And.
Uh, non-conforming buildings may be continued, repaired, structurally altered, blah, 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 provided that such action does not increase the vertical height of the non-conforming building.
Or the degree of or create any new non-conformity to disball regulations.
Okay, I'm going to approve unless somebody yells at me not to. Or says, or says they have a question. Alterations of non-conforming building.
No changes there.
Okay, restoration of an unconforming.
No changes.
Okay, we're on one thirty four twenty code enforcement officer.
Right.
I don't see any changes or comments. Building permits, no building or structure shall be erected, added or structurally altered until a permit has been issued.
So the change here, sorry, Fran, you have highlighted the requirement for two copies of a layout or plot plan run to scale and.
I thought that somebody, whether it was ZBA or planning or who was requiring electronic copies of documents of drawings.
Yes.
Is that, do we need that here?
Um, not unless it's required for building permits in general, and I don't think that that's the case.
Okay. And I made some adjustments. I knew Marie made some adjustments. Anything that said the form or application is attached here, we changed it to can be obtained from the village clerk.
Sounds good.
Wow, and I, I know there was a couple of those that I caught, a couple of those that Marie caught. So certificate of occupancy. Now, if I can get down without jumping all over the place. Okay. No, no, I'm, I'm one thirty four twenty two certificate of occupancy, no, non-conforming use shall be maintained, renewed, changed or extended without a certificate of occupancy. So that's coming out.
Yes.
So if you have a non-conforming use, you can't get a C of O?
No, you'd already have one.
No, non-conforming use shall be maintained. So non-conforming use can be maintained, it can be renewed. Uh, sorry. A non-conforming use cannot be changed or extended. So, so go back up to non-conforming uses.
Right.
Yeah, the non-conforming use section covers everything that is valid. This, we, we don't, we don't provide certificates of occupancy for non, for extension or change with non-conforming use.
Okay.
So, yeah, so, but this is a non-conforming use, not a non-conforming building.
Okay.
And, okay.
I'm good, thank you. Um, okay, all certificates of occupation shall apply. Such certificate shall be issued within ten days after the erection or alteration. Shall have been for, okay, so that's fine. It should be obtained from the village clerk. Okay, a note. We're replacing the note. It says, see chapter forty, building certificate, consultant, the X state uniform fire protection building. That's fine. Marie, is that note attached to anything or it's just a note?
Um, it's, it's a footnote, it's number nine.
It is number nine. Okay, okay. I'll find it. Thank you. ZBA. All right.
So.
We're this.
So the powers and duties. The major change here is that special use permits are no longer under the authority of the ZBA. They are now under the authority of the planning board.
And we ran all this through, um, planning board. We ran all this through the planning board and they were fine with it, right?
Yes, the planning board is fine with it.
So we're changing special permits to variances.
Yes, variances is, is what is granted by the planning, by the zoning board.
The ZBA, okay. Do you have variances for any of the requirements of this chapter? Variances. Okay, this was just a uppercase. Okay, this is just a rewriting at one thirty four twenty four.
So, sorry, so, so in B, the insertion, I'm not sure why, why it's not highlighted, um, steep, chapter one oh six, steep slope also applies. That's new.
Okay, I don't.
I don't, I don't know why it wasn't highlighted, but.
That's added.
Yeah, it was added, yeah.
Okay. Okay. Okay, so we're up down to B, is it B two? Cases which involve a variance from the bulk, blah, 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 blah. Okay, this is just a rewording. In cases which involve a variance from the permitted use for the zoning district. So now it's cases which involve a variance from the bulk or dimensional requirements within the subject zoning district or any other general dimensions shall be reviewed pursuant to the area variance standards of near state village law. Well, there is a zoning district instead of any area type. Okay, I'm going ahead with this one. Uh, and we're taking out, granting any variance, the board of appeals shall prescribe any conditions that it seems necessary, desirable that comes out.
Yeah.
As does that.
Do we have a board of appeals?
Zoning, zoning board of appeals.
If, if you don't like what the zoning board of appeal says, then you file a seventy eight, an article seventy eight.
Okay, procedure, uh, ZBA.
The special permit.
Okay, okay, so we're taking out special permits.
Right.
I want to take out the word or, um, so, so exactly said for the interpretation is claimed or the details of the variances applied, okay? My page would stop jumping. It would be nice. Form used for the special permits can be obtained by the village clerk. ZBA may refer applications for variances in interpretation. I wasn't sure, Marie, is it right to take out the word applications here?
I believe it's correct. Yes, I believe that is correct.
Okay, the ZBA may refer applications for variances and for interpretations to the village planning, engineering or legal consultants for review and comment. Upon approval of the village may obtain such, okay, okay, special permits comes out. Applications again comes out. All such referrals or engagements or other consultants shall be at the applicant's expense. That's fine. ZBA. My screen keeps jumping. Okay. Okay, okay, okay. At least ten days before this is special permit. On failure to submit the report to planning board, maybe she'll be deemed, or this comes out because it's not planning board.
Right.
Special permits comes out. Special use permit, additional duties were one thirty four twenty seven. Special use permit approval for any of the special uses defined in this chapter. Or chapter one oh six.
I'm sorry, Fran, I, I mind jumped. I'm not sure where you are.
I'm at one thirty four twenty seven. It's showing us page ninety three.
Okay, thank you.
Additional uses, additional duties.
You're under planning board.
Duties.
Right, I'm sorry, yes. Special use approval for any of the special uses defined in this chapter. Why is one thirty four sixteen in there, Marie? Is that the special use section? Or do we just want to leave it as the whole chapter?
Leave it as the whole chapter. They're just, uh, just delete parentheses, one thirty six fourteen.
Okay. I put, why did I put that in? Okay. I put it in, that was my fault. Requires obtaining of a special use permit. Planning board shall act in strict accordance, blah, 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 blah. As the case may be. Form can be found at the clerk. All applicants, applications shall be accompanied by funds according to chapter fifty seven.
Um, I, I wouldn't put it there.
You wouldn't put what?
Um, the all applications for special use permits shall be accompanied by funds pursuant to chapter fifty seven. It seems to me that the planning board would identify when a, the, um, the escrow account needs to be established. Not in general upon application for special use permit.
So you want to delete this?
No, um, I would, I would change the wording. Let me, so this ninety three. Number two. I'll work on it.
Um, now I got a whole bunch of emojis that I don't want at all. Okay. Okay, um. Number three, planning board for applications for special uses, et cetera, et cetera, should schedule a public hearing. The signs, et cetera, et cetera. The applicant will post the signs. Okay. At least ten days before the hearing. On an application for the planning board, Marie, that's okay? For a special use.
At least it is for the date of the hearing, I law on an application to the planning board for special use permit. I'm not sure that a hearing is required. Fran, I'm gonna have to take a look at that.
Okay, this is number five.
Yeah, got it.
All right, I'm just gonna add a. Okay. All special use permits shall be considered null and void if the applicant does not obtain a building permit within two calendar years. And I think that's. Okay, applicant shall also be responsible for application fees as established. That's okay that way?
Yeah.
Okay. Site plan review. Playboi show you the plans submitted for approval. Site plans. Outdo lighting in conformance with chapter eighty one. Comprehensive plan, such portions of the comprehensive. This may be an existence. Uh, appropriate required by the planning board, the contours of the property and any significant including where considered a three D model, okay? Traffic survey or appropriate. Okay, planning board show, okay, we got a bond. In cash or letter of credit or surety bond note. Village planning board is to the we took out a mount. This is sure to come in. I took out a mount.
Yeah. I, I would, I would leave that in. Fran?
I guess.
It's possible they may ask for.
I guess because it said amount up above in the, the second sentence. Dead bond may be in cash letter of credit or surety company bond in an amount subject to the approval of the village planning board. So that's why.
Okay, yeah, yeah, yeah.
Bond.
Fine, go ahead.
Okay. Such surety bond or letter of credit. She'll be in amount not less than one hundred percent of the estimated cost. Where the planning board deems it advisable. The village board should be, okay, it can appoint. If the property owner or developer is found to be in default. Surety bond or letter of credit. Letter of credit or cash. New York State Uniform Fire Prevention. Plenty waiver. Okay, the planning board can include that.
Yeah.
Penalties.
Fran, back up. Back up in, uh, C one, is it C one? Yeah. It's down towards the end of the, it's probably if you go down to the very end, it's, uh. It's down towards the end of the, it's probably if you go down to the very end, it's, uh, one, two, three, four, five, six, about eight lines up, there's like a lot of spaces. I don't know if you want to correct that now, or?
Okay, what, what page you on Dave?
It's, uh, I'm on page ninety-five, it's number one.
Okay, I see it, I see it. I get a lot of spaces here. There was a tab in there. Where else?
It was, uh, that eight lines up, it is like before cash, the word cash, there's says credit or, and then there's like. Way down, you are, it's like eight up from the bottom, sorry. Oh, there's a bunch up there too, I guess.
Yeah, it seems that, um.
Yeah, there's one up from where you are too. Amount of his fee.
Okay, now my, my screen is getting too big, stop, the screen's getting big.
Fran, can you make a note of it and go back tomorrow, maybe?
Sure, uh, okay, so we're on page. Ninety. Okay, let me see. C one.
It's C one.
Okay, remove.
A number of them in that paragraph.
Yeah, some reason of the paragraph seems to be blocked. Okay. I will come back and clear that.
There's one in D one two. Third line. Those are the only ones I see on that. Now, there's a bunch of these.
Yeah, because somebody blocked the paragraphs instead of leaving them.
Well, I'll go through these, there's a number you can see there, there's a lot of spaces.
Okay, I will clear and. Okay, so we're back to penalties. Any person firm or corporation. Committing an offense against any of the provisions of this chapter. Shall be guilty, et cetera, et cetera. Village Board of Trustees may also enforce this chapter by injunction to New York State Supreme Court. Okay, can be obtained by the. Village clerk. Just added New York Municipal Home Rule.
Where are you Fran?
I'm at one thirty-four thirty-two, page. One hundred, page one hundred and one, actually. The village board may from time to time, uh, blah, 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 provisions of this chapter after public notice and hearing, subject to the requirements of the New York. Municipal Home Rule Law and the New York Village Law and requirements of New York General Municipal Law.
Yeah, okay.
So that shouldn't be state of New York, that's.
You know, I looked, I looked it up and it didn't say New York State, it just said New York.
No, okay.
New York State, but it wasn't titled that.
New York, then I'm good with it.
Okay, it's New York, I can't help it. And I haven't even been there for a long time, it's really bad. You should, you should hear me after I visited for a couple of weeks, a couple of days. Ladies and gentlemen, that looks like we're at the end, other than diagrams and maps and stuff. So we've got.
Actually. Actually, the, um. Appendix D. Prior, in some place in one thirty-four, and I can't remember exactly where it is. It identifies those parcels below the railroad tracks, which are B one parcels. And it also identifies the parcels on Main Street that are B one parcels. And in going through those parcels, I had, there were a number of parcels that were identified that no longer exist. Uh, so I've gone back to the town to get, uh, confirmation that the parcels have been merged. Blah, 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 blah. So there's a list of parcels now. In appendix, pardon me?
You laughing at the blah, blah, blah?
No, I have someone on my shoulder, a parrot.
Hey Steph.
Hi.
Thank you for all your good work.
You're so welcome.
I wish I could do this all day, every day, this is crazy.
See you later.
Are you saying appendix B or D?
D is in dog.
Okay, I'm looking at appendix B here.
I think I have the list correct, but I would appreciate it if people would go through it and confirm. Or. Identify parcels that are missing. Or parcels that are identified but are not in the B one district.
So this is all B one, right?
All B one, so it's those parcels on Main Street, which are part of B one, and not all of Main Street is B one. Um, and those parcels below the railroad tracks that are B one, and not all parcels below the railroad tracks are B one.
Okay, and you, you at one point gave us a. Is this, is this the list where you gave us the addresses to go along with these numbers?
Yeah, I believe so Fran, let me.
Okay.
Yeah, it's, it's on, uh, it's on the website.
Right, okay, so that we can do. Um, the other thing. Is the dimensions?
Yes, yeah, now on the dimensions table, I had a real problem, I was going back to, um, update the dimensions table with the, um, changes that, uh, the V B O T had identified. And I'm having difficulty getting them to come out red. So Fran, I'll give you a call over the weekend, I'm sorry, oh, maybe tomorrow, and maybe you can help me, Excel is just not cooperating.
Okay. Tomorrow's sort of an on and off day because we have company coming, unless you want to talk to my three-year-old great-grandson, and he can probably help me more than. I can. But, um, okay, I will be glad to, you know, take a look at this with you.
The next, the next time we'll be back to this would be Tuesday, so there's time.
Okay, so this is. So from here.
When we do the, uh, when we, uh, for the public review, or, uh, will the map be updated, how, how is the, uh, map, uh, will we have a new map that'll be included in the, in the, uh, update? We're not gonna use the old map, right, or how does this work with the map itself?
We're going to have a Ouija board. Going to, um, what I was thinking we would do is we'd have the old map and the new map. Where the old map shows, uh, the representation of the current districts. And the new map would show the, the proposed districts. We would also have the list, and which is also on the website, of those parcels that are affected by the zoning district changes. So for example, on Rock Street, where a parcel is currently in the I one district. It would be shown as a parcel in the M U one district. And, um, so waterfront park, which is currently shown. Unfortunately, a district called Recreation, which does not exist. Um, that would show in the P R one district. So, people could compare the, the old map and to the new map, and would also have a, um, a cross-reference of parcels by tax map ID and name and street address.
So just for the, uh, for the, uh, the actual document, is, is we having someone, just are we gonna color in the different areas and mark them? Or are we having someone to do that, or does that come after the public hearing when everything's actually finalized? When does a new map actually happen, I guess?
Okay, okay, you had told me not to do that yet. Um, but I was, yes, you did. Um, but I'm very happy to go back to Putnam County.
Okay.
And ask them to generate it now.
I mean, I'm just asking though, when, when is it? I mean, we don't need that right now, does, did we have a plan for that? I mean, if, if we go to a public hearing, what are we gonna show? Will we have a map that we mark up and then go from there? Is that easy enough to do?
Um, I would prefer that we have a map that is actually generated, a generated map. Um. And, and if, again, if you agree, I'll ask, uh, Putnam County to start doing that.
And then if we have to, if there are additional changes. Is there, is there a possibility that there'll be additional changes after the public hearing on that map?
Um, it's possible that, uh, someone who currently lives in an I one district and is being changed to an M U one district would disagree with that.
When you, when you. When you did the public hearings before with the code update committee, didn't you have two maps or showed sections of that?
Yes, we did have two maps, um, and we did show, um, uh, we did show the second map. That map was not as precise as it could have been. Uh, it was built upon the current zoning map. The current zoning map does not reflect parcels that have been merged since nineteen, sorry, since two thousand and eight. So it does not affect any of the districts that are changing. But it could be pointed to and say, and, and say, hey, that's not an accurate map, and correct, it's not an accurate map.
And well, well, do we have, I forget what it was, that, the deal with Putnam County, if they generate one map. Um, and there are changes made from the public hearing, there's a huge outcry, and we have to revert back some section or whatever. Then will they generate another map, or is that, at, what's the cost on all of this?
Okay, yeah, thus far, they, um, they haven't charged us for anything. Um, the head of the, the department that produces the maps has um, given permission to, to the woman who does the maps to work with us. And I've told her we may have to go through another iteration on this, and she said, no problem.
Okay.
Nice of them.
Yes, yes, the, the.
County you were dealing with.
Yes, yes, uh, the woman has been incredibly helpful.
Okay.
You sounded like you're in disbelief, Dave.
I was.
Marie, I have a question on appendix C, the Butterfield Site Concept, Concept Plan, shouldn't that be dated? There is no date showing, I mean, isn't this a plan that was done a long time ago? Change?
It was, it was done whenever Butterfield was done. Um, I thought that someplace in a footnote. Um, actually, at the beginning of. It might, might be in.
Fifteen A?
Uh, no, actually. In like one thirty-four dash three, I mean, way early.
Okay. I'm looking at my cheat sheet here.
Yes, yes, um, one thirty-four, so go to page sixteen.
This whole big footnote thing?
Size that barely shown on the constant port. Footnote should be, and the zoning map is on file.
Dated blank.
No, no, that, that's, that we have to fill in when we file, that's us, right. Um, as it turns out, there's no date here, um, unless I can find where. Oops, everything's jumping. Okay, amended. What appendix did you say it was in Fran?
The, it's appendix C as in Charlie.
Okay, um. I'll have to see if I can find that.
Okay, did you want me to ask Jeff if he has the?
No, 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 I think you're.
Okay.
And you said it was C, correct?
It's C, right, appendix C Butterfield Site Concept Plan.
Okay.
So that takes care of that. So, do we want to go back and look at some stuff that we passed over in the beginning, we changed some definitions and so on and so forth, or do we want to save that for Tuesday, or?
Let's do that. Let's go back and see what remains.
I know that we changed some definitions in the beginning, some of which we can probably clean up. So, we added the scene view. That's fine. Okay. Okay, this first thing I see, um, is on page five. There's a note, and I think Marie said this was a discussion you had with Dave, uh, that didn't really belong to a note. It's right under the definition of bed and breakfast, it's on page five, it's, it's notes. Access to dockside is now currently possible only by an Eastman through one to three North Street, known as the Siskin property.
Yeah, this shouldn't be in there, um. David asked the question. Of whether or not the comprehensive plan talked about, um, the waterfront properties. And it does. Uh, Dave, I responded to you in an email on that. Uh, it talks, it talks about two parcels, one is the Siskin property, which is Laura Bergman, and the other is the Tom Impal property. And what the comprehensive plan says is that the village should attempt to buy those properties to, um, continue to provide access to dockside, so. Um, that, that note can be deleted.
Okay, that takes care of that problem.
I, I, I believe it should be deleted, right Dave?
Yes, yep.
Yeah.
Okay. Alright, now we went into the definitions that we got from Ted Fink. So we're up one page. Eight. The first definition, it says floor area, it used to be of a building floor area, but now it says floor area gross. Um, and the definition was changed in accordance with, with what Ted Fink sent us, are we okay with that? Any problems anywhere?
Still confusing to me, but if everyone else is not confused. I'm easily confused.
Well, no, I, I, I made a modification to that, Dave. It's the first sentence, the sum of the gross, the sum of the gross horizontal areas of the several floors of a building within the inside perimeter of the exterior of the walls of the building under consideration. So you were concerned that it would only reflect, the definition would only reflect one floor.
Yeah. Yeah.
Okay.
So now, if you, if you're talking about a building, uh, with a business on the first floor, and you're talking about the gross floor area for that particular building, you're only talking about that one floor.
No, if you're talking about the building.
I'm sorry, the gross floor area for that business.
If you're talking about the gross floor area of the business, then it's only the floor area of the business.
Okay, it'll be the gross, okay, okay. So we're good with this.
So that's the area, so that's where I'm a little confused, so where, where is that, is that net floor area, or what? Where, where is it defined what Fran's talking about?
So if you look at the, um, you have to go to, into each of the districts to see what the district identifies as, um, what needs to be measured. I think primarily Fran's discussion point. I think primarily Fran's discussion point has to do with parking spaces. Gross floor area, parking spaces, correct Fran?
And that was, yeah, that was a question, but I was just looking at this definition right now where you're saying. The gross floor areas are some of the gross areas of the several floors of a building within the inside corridor, but we may not always be talking about. The entire building. So you may want the gross floor area of the first floor, which has a business.
But that wouldn't be grossed.
But that could also be gross versus net. I mean, gross still means, um, not the floor area of a building not provided with surrounding exterior walls of, uh. Let me see, the gross floor area shall not include shafts and no openings of interior. So it's basically. Uh, the inside perimeter of the exterior walls. Uh, so it doesn't have to be the sum unless you're talking about the gross floor area of the whole building.
Hmm.
It can be just. The inside perimeter of the exterior walls of the first floor, because that's what we're looking at for the business. Or you could be talking about all of them.
See, I think that's the, that's where I was confused, because I think that's the floor area. The floor area, if you're talking about a business, that's the floor area. If you're talking about the gross, it's all the added horizontal floor areas. Um, gross.
Okay, then you're talking about net, the actual occupied area, not included unoccupied accessory areas such as corridors, stairways, ramps. Toilet rooms, mechanical rooms, and closets. Which is the, the net.
It's, I don't, I don't know. It's hard to feel like, because we're not, we, I don't know where this is going to be referred to and whenever. I don't know, I don't know when this comes up and how it's discussed and what context.
Okay, so there are two primary areas. One is in the parking table. Um, and if you can imagine the parking table, on the left is the, the use. Of the, um, of, of the area being considered, and on the right is the number of parking spaces for that use. The second area where it's in, where you can find it is in each of the districts. Each district has, um, in, in many districts. There is a minimum gross floor area for, that is required for the district or. A maximum gross floor area or a net gross floor area. Um, for a, for example, an accessory apartment. An accessory apartment has, I believe it's identified in, in net floor area. Whereas in R one, a one-family house may have a gross floor area identified.
So if. If we were to change this definition back to saying, um. Let me go back here for a second. Now, what Ted gave us was the floor area. Taking the floor area within the inside perimeter of the exterior walls of a building, so. So instead of this.
What Ted, Ted's, Ted's definition did not take into account the multiple floors. In a building. Which contribute to the gross floor area.
Can we break this into sections and say something like? The gross floor area is the floor area within the inside perimeter, blah, 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 blah. Um. Uh, if we're, you know, in, in discussing a total building, then it's the sum of all of the. Floors, and if we're discussing a particular floor, then it's the gross floor, just for that floor. I mean. I think gross floor area doesn't have to be the total building.
But what does gross mean?
Gross means, you know, like, like, when I was working in a city, I remember.
Think of gross as a footprint.
Yeah, it was basically when the city was the difference between rental and payable. You know, rental and usable. You rented the whole entire space, even though there was elevators and crap, blah, 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 on the inside, but you didn't use it. So gross is, as Marie said, the inside of the footprint, the inside of the exterior walls. It's not usable. It's not the part that we actually use. So it, it, in this particular. Uh, definition. It, it doesn't account the vent shafts and courts. But it also doesn't, we, doesn't, um, delete corridor, stairways, ramps, et cetera. Those are counted. So it basically doesn't count vent shafts, elevator shafts, that kinda stuff. You wanna leave this still to, to think about it? Oops, that's what I wanted to do.
I, I definitely think we should accept net floor area.
Net floor area, I think is fine. All right, so gross floor area is, um.
If you go to definition, if you go to definitions, it's definitely floor, the gross floor area is, you know. And everything I'm reading here on definitions of what gross is. Generally, the gross floor area, this is US Green Building Code, is the sum of floor areas. Um, the floor area within the inside perimeter exterior walls of a building. Um, I mean, all of them refer to it as. You know, gross floor area from real estate is total floor area inside the building. Then there's a separate one that says floor area, which is the area of a floor or part of a floor. So that's where I get confused. Gross to me means like, if you have a gross, you make your gross salary. It's not just a part of it. It's everything that you make. And that's where I get confused. That's why I don't think gross is good, but everyone else thinks it's good. Once again. I, I, probably doesn't even matter. It probably never comes up.
I'm just, because, because we have differences on them, so I'm particularly just thinking of, uh, Main Street. Where you, where we make decisions based on the business that's going into the first floor.
And that should be the floor area.
The net floor area?
I don't know, but it should be net, it's just a floor area. If it's fifty by thirty, is that enough for whatever our code says? It's just the area, I mean, of what you're allowed to do in a certain area, and I don't even know if that comes up.
It, it does, for example, in determining. It comes up in the parking table. So for example, if you're looking at restaurant, we talk about the gross floor area of a restaurant, not just the seating area of the restaurant.
Why wouldn't that be the floor area, not gross floor area?
Because we don't use the term, we don't use the term floor area. We, we. We either use the term gross floor area or net, well, define floor area for me.
What's that?
Define floor area for me.
Being the floor, the area being used for, of, whatever, a business or, or for residents, you know, one floor.
Okay, so for a restaurant, for example, is it just the, is it just the seating area? Is it the, um, kitchen? Is it the restrooms? Is it, um, uh, whatever? I mean, we got into this with the livable versus habitable. And the, the, the difficulty was in defining. Livable versus habitable, and so the recommendation that I made was to go with gross versus net. And you, I, I did not, there was a lot of thought about.
Because that was basically Ted said that habitable and livable are not used, that it's either gross or net, and he gave us those definitions. We, we, you know, we opted to go with.
Yes.
With what he said.
And if we, if we're talking about restaurants as far as parking goes, wasn't that the number of tables? It wasn't by the floor space or area or. Gross or livable or habitable, wasn't it? It's the amount of, of tables in, in an area. I mean.
You, you may, you, you. You may be right that in the parking table, restaurants was on the number of seats in the restaurant. Uh, but there were other categories in the parking table that used either gross or net.
Actually, in the parking table, I'm looking at, it says eating and drinking places, and it's one for each seventy-five square feet of gross floor area. Um, we could change that to net floor area if we, if we're comfortable with it. And that to me defines because in a regular drinking place, you may not have tables, but you have a bar, which could be crowded. It's not really a table.
Okay, we can leave it as gross. If you're talking about a restaurant, there's two floors, the gross area. If you're saying the number per gross floor area, that would be correct in that instance.
I mean, if it's one floor, if it's, um, let me see. Like in the, in the case of the Silver Spoon, you've got. I guess it's, I don't know what he's got. I give up on that one.
His gross floor area would be, or that he's being used would be all three floors. It would be the addition of.
He had, but he had separate, did we charge him separate parking because he added tables? He added seating, or so I guess it was.
That was, yes, yes.
We added some extra parking fees to him because he added X amount of tables or X amount of space.
Um, he, he originally, he was originally assessed parking spaces on the number of rooms that he was renting. And then when he added the eating area in the front. Um, in the, what would you call it, the reception area, and then outside on his, on the, um. Stoop that he now owns, he was assessed more parking spaces. Because he went from just a, a hotel to a hotel and food service.
So if you're thinking of the building with Sky Babies, the first floor where, uh, they have the, uh. Little coffee shop.
They have a coffee shop, a spa.
Area and.
Detail.
You can't say that's a gross floor area because our, our definition is the sum of all the horizontal areas of several floors.
Right, I, I, yeah, I don't, I don't know what the calculations were that went into the Sky Baby. Um, requirement for parking. I, I just, I don't know. I could certainly try to find out.
I just, I mean, I don't know when else it's used where it's like square foot versus, like, if we're talking about that area, what they can do. With the first floor, then gross floor is not gonna work, but, so how to, besides parking, is there any other? Um, restrictions or regulations on your, the area you can use that's, you know, of, of a floor or what you need of one floor?
Um, there are minimum requirements for the size of a floor in different districts, but I don't. There's a maximum. Um. There's a maximum in, it, it may have been in I, I'd have to look to see whether or not there's a, a maximum. There's definitely not a maximum gross floor area in R one or R three. There's, there's no maximum in B one. There's no maximum in B two. B three. I don't think there's a maximum in B four or B four A. You know, maximum gross floor area or even net floor area.
Okay, I'm, I'm, whatever. It's, it's, I think it's, it's worked this far. It was just this confusing, if not more before, so.
Okay, the, the one, the one dimension that we haven't settled on is height.
I think that the height should be, I, I think what, I, I, what I'm concerned about, and I think is the visual from the street side, the facade that's facing the street. So on Main Street, that would be the main street side, and I think that the height should be. Taken from the highest point of the front elevation to the highest point of the, of the building, regardless of if it's flat or peaked or whatever it is. So if you take Labushan and that's thirty-five feet, you'd go from. The west, the east side of the front elevation, you take a measure from the finished grade. And you go up thirty-five feet, and that's how far you build. If it's, if it's, uh, another building, like, uh, the Garden Cafe has, as a, as a peaked roof. It's the same thing. You go from the highest point of the finished grade on the facade facing the street. That's prominent or a dress site, I don't know what the wording is there, to the highest point of the building. So, and it, and I think it works out almost exactly like what we have now, only you don't get into. Taking averages and going to the halfway mark between the ceiling of the attic or the floor of the attic to the peak. It, I just think it should be. You know, simplified.
What was the reason for the previous way of doing it or the current way? With the break, get it up like that?
I think the reason.
Foundation heights and stuff?
No, no, I, I believe that the original thinking behind the height was fire safety. However, our fire company has said that they can, um, uh, safely. Uh, protect. The height of the buildings that we currently have in the village.
Yeah, it went in, and, um. When Anne's house burnt on High Street, didn't they have to call for hook and ladder from Fishkill?
Yes, and they're very willing to do that, and there's also, I believe, a ladder truck at Graymore. Um. And I, I believe that, that when the building burned at the top of High, uh, Main Street, they brought in equipment. To, to handle higher, higher buildings. So, fire safety, it seems to me, is no longer a factor in terms of height. I'm very hesitant to put in the zoning code a fact, a height factor that's based on aesthetics. I think that the height factor should be based on, um, something other than aesthetics.
Well, we don't have to say, state that. Right now, it's, the, the height definition is, it, it doesn't say what it's for. And I'm not saying we say what it's specifically for, but I think when we say, what's the height of a Main Street building do we want? We want two and a half or three floors, then we get into feet, and in order to define that, you need what the height, how you measure height.
I, 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 I have no problem with changing the way you measure height, and a single measurement of height from the highest point. Of the, from the highest land point. Um, uh, grade, whatever, i- is fine. The, saying that you, you only measure that from the facade of the building. Is, it, it seems to me that's artificial.
Well, why, why are we setting a height? Why, why, what's the reason for setting a height in a district?
Well, as, as I said at the beginning, I thought it was more for fire safety. But I no longer think that that's the case. That our fire company has said that they can, uh, safely service all of the buildings in the Village of Cold Spring.
And so when we have a two and a half, when we say we want a two and a half floor building, that's the same reason?
Well, the two and a half floors, I believe, gets into a little bit more than fire safety. I believe that when you have a third floor, you get into New York State of, um, Building and Fire Code. And the third floor requires either a, if the third floor is livable, which is, is possible. Then I think you either have to have a fire escape or it has to be sprinkled.
But during our discussion, why was the reason of our discussion on Main Street going from two and a half to three floors? Was it because of, of state code? I don't think so. Was it about fire? I don't think so. I think about aesthetics.
No, no, it was about making the buildings on Main Street provide more income for the owners of the buildings. I, if you've got a building, and I'll, I'll use the, um, uh.
I have, I don't, I understand that, but I don't think that was. I think that was. Or do you want something the size, three stories, the size of, of, uh, you know. Where Jeff Kusaga is, or do you want three stories versus Labushan? There's a big difference there, so. Why, why would we? Why would we care about height between, I guess we're not caring about height between two and a half and three floors. You're saying it's just about.
It was, the, 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 the code update committee felt that there could, the buildings on Main Street. Current buildings on Main Street and future buildings on Main Street could be made more, um, uh, financially viable. If they could put a third floor on the building.
I think when we talked about it a couple of weeks ago. I think, Dave, you sent something out that said, I mean, if we could have thirty-five feet. Uh, you could put three stories in thirty-five feet as well as two and a half based on how, how the floors were set. So that's when we started talking about. So that's when we started talking about, well, as long as they're thirty-five feet, doesn't matter whether it's two and a half or three.
Right.
So um, so that's where we went.
I mean, I mean, why can't, we can't discuss uh, aesthetics on, on Main Street? I mean, we have a whole historic board that's. That's set up just for aesthetics.
Yeah, it's set up for aesthetics, but not for um, um, i- 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 it, it doesn't include. Uh, the um, bulk regulations, that's the zoning.
So there's uh, there's nothing that, so what, so there's something that prevents us from saying. We don't think a three-story building will aesthetically fit in all of uh, Main Street, so we don't want that? I mean, is that illegal somehow?
I, I'm not sure, I'm not sure.
Something, it sounds like you're saying we can't base something on aesthetics. Is there a law or something that prevents us from actually saying that? If we can, can we say a, a height of a building on, either on Main Street or on anywhere else in the village? Can be two and a half floors, but they'll limit it to thirty-five feet.
And that's the.
And if that's, that's not for aesthetic purposes, I don't know what else, what else it is. Why can't it go to forty feet then? Or why, if, if it's not for aesthetics, why, why we have a limit? You could have a three-story building that could be forty feet, fifty feet.
We probably have some in the village. I, I, I don't have a binder full of, full of pictures of those two hundred plus. Buildings in the village as Steve does, uh, but we probably have some.
There are. There's a number. I'm not aware of a binder, but. Sky Baby's three stories and it's over fifty feet high when you're up there.
Yeah, it's, it's very, there are a number of buildings in the, in, in the village. And particularly on Main Street that are three stories uh, and, and probably exceed thirty-five feet. And they've been there for a long time.
I agree, but what, we're writing a code that's trying to define or work with comprehensive plan or what people's wishes on what the village should be. And I don't think we want, you know, forty-foot buildings anywhere, so we've restricted them. Because we feel that, I think the real reason is that it's aesthetically more pleasing. It's more, more uh, of the character of the village.
The, the comprehensive plan doesn't say that.
I was just referring to it, hoping it did, but. I, I just don't see why, I, I, I don't think there's any other reason to restrict the height of a building other than, I mean, unless it's dangerous, but besides that. Um, what's the difference? Why have we got thirty-five feet as a number? Why, why is it thirty-five feet? That, that doesn't make any sense if it's not aesthetics.
And a- again, I go back to, I believe when the zoning code was originally adopted. I believe that the thirty-five foot, two and a half stories was based on fire safety.
So now we have to ask ourselves.
Well, now we're rewriting the code, so. Just get rid of the thirty-five feet because there's no reason why it shouldn't be. There's no reason why there should be a, a reason for a thirty-five foot restriction.
Well, I think it's our responsibility now to, you know, if we don't have a fire regulation that says. Thirty-five feet, we have to determine what we want, want our village to look like. And that's, I think, a lot, based on a lot of what we're doing right now, determining, which I guess is a, a statics. I mean, what else can be, this is what the village, we want the village to look like. We don't want it to be a whole bunch of fifty-foot buildings. So it's our, our determination to, you know. To make a decision and it's got to be aesthetics. What else can, I mean, it's not safety anymore, um, although maybe fifty, sixty feet wouldn't be a problem. Um, so it's got to be what we want the village to look like. So having said that.
I, I, I agree. We can, we can leave the height thing. The, the only reason why I had to change the definitions, I thought it should be more simple. I went over when we, when they did the sixty-four Paulding Avenue, I went there and I checked out, you know, from the site plan. And the elevations that they provided and went through their whole, the whole cockamamie. You take the average of each side, the height, the average of each side, and you add those, and then that's the height. And since it's got a pitched roof, then it goes to halfway between the attic floor to the, the attic and it's thirty-five feet. And, and that building pretty much comes out to thirty-five, it might be a four more feet or whatever, so. But, you know, I, I just wanted to simplify. We could leave it just like it is and you're, you're probably going to gain, it's not going to be thirty-five feet. You probably get forty feet out of it, depending on the pitch of a roof. And maybe that doesn't matter. I just thought that we should simplify, but it's not a big deal.
And um, it'll losses to. You know, how the simple, I mean, I leave it up to Dave and Steve to go into stuff like that, that it's.
If you, if you're looking at sixty-four Paulding Avenue where they're building by the, by the Butterfield.
Okay.
And you're, and you're looking at the front of, right now, the way the code's written, you take all four sides, each side you go. Take the average between the high point and the low point of the, of the grade. So if it's like steep, like, you know, from the front going back, it's steep considerably. So you take the average of all four sides, put them together, and, and that's the number you use to get the thirty-five feet. You know, you take the average height from there, you know, up from one of those points, so. To the peak of the building, it's to, it's, it's to the center mark.
The highest point of the roof for flat roofs, the dead line for mansard roofs. And the mean height between eaves and ridge for gable hip and gambol roofs.
Yeah, yeah, there's all differences, so, so with a flat roof or what they consider a flat roof, which we really don't have too many of. We have slightly pitched roofs, uh, low pitched roofs, the actual thirty-five feet would actually be the height of the building, so you know what you're getting there. If it's a pitched roof, you're not getting thirty-five feet, it depends on how wide the building and how much of a peak you can put on it, where that center line is. So it's not thirty-five feet, it can be, you know, another additional five feet or more. The, I just thought we should know what we were getting.
This is, this is.
Code forever and, uh, you know, Butterfield used it to their advantage. They were able to go up higher. It gives you also access, more attic access that you can put dormers on um, and use, like, so. We can leave it totally the way it is. That's confusing to me, but, you know, it's been in code forever and nobody else seems to have a problem with it. So just leave it.
It's not about, if it's not about aesthetics, then it, it does kind of. Make you wonder why we are enforcing it. It's not a fire code issue. If you, if you're over two stories, you're supposed to have sprinklers. That's the only rule, so if you want to.
I mean, it's.
If you want to occupy the attic of your house, uh, now you have to have a sprinkler system or a fire escape of some kind, so, like. If, if we don't want giant buildings on a Main Street, then it makes sense, but if that's not the reason we're doing it, then why are we doing? If, that's what you're saying here, Dave, right? What's, what's our motivation?
Yeah, no, it's, it's, I mean, it's about what we want the village to look like.
Right. But we're not saying it that way. We're saying it, you know, the mean heights and the, you know. The floor height, uh, but why? Yeah. I mean, we have the right to, or not the right, but the. We're allowed to determine how tall we can let buildings be in our town, right?
Yeah, our village, Steve, village, village.
Or aren't we?
No, we are.
Because of a safety issue, then that's one reason, but if it's just because we don't like tall buildings, then, you know, we should say it that way.
I mean, we are, we are, but you have to somehow define how people want to measure their buildings. So, so the definition to me is, sounds like something that. People with construction knowledge has better handle on than I do. And on that note, it is eight thirty-three.
Oh, it is way over.
I know.
No, not way.
Alright.
Well, Tuesday at six o'clock.
What's that?
Tuesday at six o'clock.
Right. Yes, that's what we, that's what we've decided.
Somebody's at my door. I gotta go. I don't know who it is.
Second.
Alright, I, see y'all.
I see you all. Have a good weekend, Michael. Thank you. Good night, Michael.